Meeting please come to order. Any questions, ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
From Fremont Lutheran Church, here's the letter of prayer. Heavenly Father, we, when we offer prayers to you, we are mindful that we don't have all the answers. We need your help and guidance, but we are sinful beings. Remind us that there is power in the decisions made here that ought to be used to seek for the welfare of the city. We know that you do not force your will upon us, but we learn to listen to you as the source of truth. By this dreaming open to your will so that the decisions made will be for the common good. We are grateful to you for the provisions you have made available to us. As our life goes on, continue to shed your grace upon us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you. Is there any Republican vote? Okay. Mrs. Gallagher, I think if you want to just wait until we get to our new business and that you can give your...
Okay.
Statement again?
Yep.
Okay, alright. Are there amendments to the agenda?
No.
Alright. In the mayor's report, remind everybody that tomorrow is election day, so please vote. Do your duty as a U.S. citizen and citizen of Kansas and a citizen of North Florida. Williamsburg has four polling places. If you are unsure where to vote, Roxy will be glad to tell you where. We are continuing to have a very busy time here in our town and following Hillings Fest, this week we will be welcoming the Kansas Museum Conference that will be leading here in McPherson and in Williamsburg Wednesday and Thursday. So please greet our visitors warmly. This weekend is the beginning of the Christmas season here in Williamsburg. Baker series is Friday night and the holiday open house is on Saturday. Their theme this year for the Christmas season is Season of Light, Season of Giving. I want to say a special thank you to Merle Larson, who continues to put the lights on our trees. A labor of love and it is labor. So if you see Merle around, please thank him very, very much. There is one other concert on this coming Sunday in celebrating Bethany Luther Church's 150th anniversary. It's a Bach concert in the church. It's being directed by Dr. Walter Pels and it should be a really wonderful event. Freedom Open to the Public at 3:00 P.M. That's the only meeting for Friday. There now? Alright, consent agenda. Are there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, Roxy?
Correct.
Yes.
Jody, yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. An appointment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm requesting the acceptance of a new member for the fire department. His name is Nicholas Dalla. He was just outside of town and he works with wind curvates in the area. I would very much like to see him, but on the fire department as a volunteer.
Alright, are there any to approve it? Motion to approve appointment of Nicholas Dalla?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Nicholas Dalla being added to our volunteer fire department? Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please thank you, Mr. Dalla.
And personally, he was out of town, so he couldn't make it.
Alright, thank you. Eric, any other?
Planning zoning back on the 23rd of October to look at a request annex 42 acres into the city. Planning zoning's role in that process is to recommend a zoning designation. So that's what they did. Request from Derek Lee, petitioner, is to annex 42 acres as part two, two-family residential type. Staff supports that recommendation and planning zoning accepted that request and passed a motion to recommend that to you. Are there any questions on the location of the acres? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to...
Motion to approve, ordinance number 5199, annexing tract of land in...
So moved, seconded.
Discussion.
Do we anticipate any issues with utilities? Perhaps other areas that we annexed for, is that GSN or electric? Is there anything they serve out there?
This is in our certified electric service territory. So from that standpoint, we shouldn't have any issues.
Any other questions? Okay, Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Jody, yes. Corey?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
David? Yes.
Order 5199 is approved? Is there any more?
No.
Alright, new business. Let's get going.
And another similar phrase, I think, too.
My name is Jim Gallagher. I've been a volunteer on the Meadow Lake Trail for the past six years. This is Michelle Cullen. She's actually the president of the CKC, which is the includes the whole Meadow Lake Trail from between McPherson and Williamsburg. And the reason we're here today is I recently purchased a four-wheeler, actually a UTV that we can use on the trail. We used to use Mr. Flynn, but since he passed away, we no longer have access to that. And the reason we're here is I'm asking or requesting permission to drive that from my house on the 100th block of North Washington to the trailhead. And the reason for that is, is we recently planted like 30 new trees on the trail and so we have to haul water out to water each of those trees. And it's really cumbersome if you have to take a truck and a trailer or something I can't do by myself. But if we could take that and just haul the trailer with all the water and all the tools, necessary stuff that we need, it makes it a whole lot more convenient. The other thing that I'd be willing to do is I've also volunteered to help with the maintenance on the trail. So I would be picking up all the trash on the trail. Transporting volunteers on workdays, we work one day a month there. A lot of times we work a mile deep in the trail, so it's nice to have a way to transport people in so that they can work and the tools and the materials. And anytime there are fallen branches that fall across the trail, I guess it's not a field to cut those, got a winch on it so that we can pull the tree limbs off the trail. And sometimes we have to haul and fill like the puddles. That's another thing that would be handy for. But one of the main things is with trucks and trailers, if you have a full-size trailer, you can't cross a lot of the bridges now that we have like a little car trailer. So by having a UTV, which is much smaller and a smaller trailer, it gives us access to be able to go in and do that. So I guess basically that explains the need that we have for it and just wondering if we could be granted a special permission to be able to do that.
Alright. First of all, thank you very much for volunteering to do this. The Meadow Lake Trail will become a great asset for Williamsburg as well. Thank you, Michelle.
We see more and more people all the time.
That's right. It's a wonderful thing for us to have here. I think what we will need to do is we will need to have staff, is that every Gary or whoever, to draft a resolution permitting, the UTV permit request. They will present that at the next council meeting, which is November the 18th, two weeks from tonight. So council will be expecting to see that on our agenda. So that's okay.
Very much appreciate that. And we would use it just to get to my house, to the trail, so there's no other reason that that can use up.
Do any council members have...
I have one issue of clarification. You said with the passing of Mr. Flynn, but Mr. Flynn is in the audience.
Not that, Mr. Flynn. Dale Flynn is actually...
Ah, Dale.
See, Dale had access to it because he lives so close to it. He just got across the field.
Okay. Will there be perhaps a chief as the director of safety for the community? I've heard transporting people on there and I, you know, want to know if that's something that can be safely recommended, safely done. So would somebody like that be on the committee that's going to talk about this? I think the public safety director has to have figured out.
When I say transporting people, I mean on the trail itself, not to the trail, but once we get to there, then to call people back in to be able to work for the day.
Any questions? There you go. Thank you very much.
No, Ed? Thank you.
Next question is Eric.
Thank you. I have to explain what this is. It's a big blueprint. Thirty-six by forty-eight. Each documents include quite a bit of planning and zoning, community development certainly. Holly borrows it from time to time in CBB. It's a very valuable tool for us. One thing is missing that we have learned that we need more and more often, and that's the ability to scan a large format document, especially with our permitting as we do now with IDTS Institute for Building Technology and Safety. They're located in Kansas City. And when we get a building permit request, generally that is accompanied by a set of plans or blueprints. We have to get those plans to Kansas City somehow. Sometimes we just have to mail them. A few contractors will provide PDF scans of the plans, blueprints, but it's not typical and it's not common. This came across the desk as special as a Selaya blueprint was offering. I didn't have any expectation of being able to afford one of these plotter scanners this early. They've been running in the $8,000 to $12,000 range for years. They're coming down in price. This one had an additional $2,000 rebate, so that sale is valid through next week and I want to take a look when we get this if we can. It would certainly provide us some flexibility. The idea is to get these plans approved as soon as possible and this will help do that. Another feature is we can start scanning some of the legacy blueprints that we have and getting a more permanent archival setup here in Kansas City. Any questions?
Alright, do I hear a motion to approve purchase of this?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, so moved and approved to move and seconded to approve in the amount of $58.95 to purchase this Kandee Freedom TM 300 plotter scanner. Any... Yes?
Yes, my question would be, that's a pretty expensive product, very costly to operate, I assume usable, I think. Are we confident that there'll actually be cost savings from doing this between the time of going to Salina and actually paying for this to be done? I just have no concept of how many things you have to print for this to actually come out ahead of us versus just using a service.
The current water actually has become a tool that I use on a weekly basis. And I was just trying to correct on this today. Costs way less than I ever expected. I remember one year we did a number of colored posters for a display that Holly did at a conference.
At a festival?
At a festival. I think we had 20, 25 of these printed out. And it really made them dent in our heat costs that year. You spend very little, I would say a couple hundred bucks a year, and you become a... The scanner feature, I can't give you numbers, but I know that a trip to Salina, the weight to get a scan of print, there's a cost. And it's certainly going to be something that increases over time as we grow and increase our building permit requests. That's the best answer. I can't give you a cost analysis, but I know that it's a good deal and I'd like to take that.
Any other comments?
I guess, but we're using a... I mean, I don't know a lot, but I just have no idea if you're printing two of these a week or...
Oh, no, thirty, probably ten to twenty a week, large format documents. Or...
I think what, one of the things I heard was getting some of the historic documents or blueprints scanned in an archive, which probably isn't something you're going to mess with when you're already dealing with doing 20 or 30 contemporary things or got to get this done this week things. That this is something that even an intern or a college student could do?
I know indirectly, a few years ago, the county cartographer acquired a scanner plotter large format and scanned in all subdivisions flat in the county of McPherson over the last 150 years. And that is one of the more valuable resources I can think of on that county website. I can go to, I can go to the county website, well, I've already downloaded all of them, but I have scans of every subdivision flat in Williamsburg. It's real valuable. It's not a paper map that I pull out of a map room, which we don't even use anymore because we don't need it. There are aspects of my ability to do those things that I cannot value and I don't support.
One value of it is from a customer service standpoint, in building services, rarely unless it's a commercial project where an architect's involved and we receive any drawings in electronic format. It helps expedite that process for review, to help expedite that project moving forward. So it does have customer service benefits also.
Any type of service agreement offered with this or just something that you see being necessary or kind of seeing it being necessary on our existing cannon plotter? We are on our third print pad that I replaced when it was bad. And that's the only thing besides the heat, whether it's the worst that I have sort of fairly simple, easy here, just there.
Any other comments? Roxy? Betty?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. First of all, I want to say thank you for that. When you asked about how much you use that, my department will, as I'm initially figuring that out, we would have taken, nor going to expense that, because it's a very expensive for us. There's only one, because I can't print for a short one. It is time to be looking at billboard contracts again. We do this every three years and in a six-month period, we ignore two largest billboards. So we have a three-year contract that we are in our final month of with George Lake for a billboard that's located 20 miles west of Topeka. This is not exactly after, I said it's a west-facing billboard, it's not west-facing. It faces east, it's in the westbound lane, so that makes it a little more clear. So you would see this billboard if you were headed from Kansas City to Salina. This was a billboard that we actually had to wait until it was available and fortunately it came available at a time where we did a really nice exchange. They exchanged us and dropped two months of our prior contract for us to take this billboard, just simply because we wanted one that was located closer to Topeka and not so close to Salina. We had both of our George Lake signs were very close to Salina and they're currently looking for one for us farther west than us the four miles of this west to Salina for our summer. So the one thing that they wanted to do, of course, was to increase the price of the billboard and I was able to negotiate with the price to be the same. So that is a good thing for us. I think they wanted $320. Okay, so the motion is to approve a contract with George Lake Sign Company for a billboard with a marker of 335.5 on I-70 and the cost is $3360, $3,360. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve?
Seconded. Can I come, any questions at all? Concerned?
Just add that I see value on the billboards that let us daily, getting further away from Williamsburg makes a lot of sense. Just thinking about it, so they make their request. I guess there's a quick question though, what have you thought about that theme, design?
Yes, I can't tell you yet. So I have thoughts for a shirt and something that I want to do and I'm thinking about it and putting that together, so.
Roxy, I believe this is the billboard, this has the summer postcard look on it.
Yes, it has the Swedish one.
Notice that coming home. And it is ready to be replaced. It's faded, it's needed.
Red and yellow are the colors that fade it most quickly. So it's usually thanks to this light that it's ready to be replaced. The interesting thing with this billboard that we, I wondered about, we put corner heights on it, but we did not say castle, corner heights, anything, and yet it has gotten, we've got a little traffic to corner heights on the picture of itself because people would Google Williamsburg Castle, things like that, and find corner heights. And we know our traffic is suffering substantially, but I think part of that is due to the billboards and the fact that we've been marketing better outdoor experiences in Williamsburg. Kind of fun.
Any other comments? Roxy?
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
And Paul?
Motion to approve.
Right.
We get past all this. K-4 transportation has a cost share program as a local match, anywhere between 15% to 25%. One of the projects we talked about and prioritized is the demolition of the K-4 overpass and realignment of the ethne drive. The current amount of information we have to submit a grant application is not sufficient to complete an application. And the next round of submission deadline is in March of 2020. A proposal from Wilson and Company to develop a study with technical sections and plan profiles plus an estimate of probable construction costs was solicited and received. The amount of that is $25,000. This is not the budgeted expenditure. So to fund this purchase, suggesting that we do not purchase the microfilm reader, we have $11,000 remaining from the West Lincoln paving budgeted item and we have budgeted the city hall locking system in 25, at $25,000, recommending using 40... Well, it's budgeted $25,000, recommending using $4,200 of that to get to $25,000.
So that project wouldn't be dropped, it's just removing...
Yes.
Removing $1,000 of...
It was budgeted about $2,500 per door on the locking system.
Alright, so the motion is to approve not to exceed $25,000. Boy, Wilson Company to the planning for the K-4 transportation cost. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Is Wilson just our, are they our default company or the only one we can get a bid from? It's...
Are they... Well, to answer your question in a short, is no, they're not the only one. We have tried other companies in the past from an engineering standpoint. I'm not going to name the company, but I can tell you in 2010, when we did East Lincoln Street and Switson Street, particularly on Switson Street, we were doing a lot of as-built because they didn't identify things in the drawings such as high-pressure natural gas lines. They had to work around with storm drain systems and re-engineer in the field because they weren't identified in the plans. We, on the downtown project, we spent about six months going back and forth with KDOT to get additional funding because the engineering firm that we employed at that time did not feel the need to do geotechnical sampling before the project and we ended up having to redo the footings for all of the lighting and that added about $40,000 to the cost of the project. While I can't say Wilson and Company is perfect, we haven't had those level of issues in using that.
Improved themselves.
Yes.
Okay. That's all? Any other comments?
The study that they do, I think one of the things that I find attractive about this project is freeing up land that could potentially be developed. Would this give us some idea of how many acres will actually be developable? Should this occur, would that be part of the study?
We could ask them to include that in there. I mean, from their standpoint, it would be fairly, when they're doing calculations from, you know, LiDAR etc., it would be a fairly simple process for that. So the answer is, is that...
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Roxy?
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion to approve? And will there be an executive session?
Uh, no.
Alright, are there any others?
If I could, the last counsel being the question...
Okay, Roxy? David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Joey? Yes. Rick?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? I believe there's an executive session?
Uh, no.
All right. Are there any others?
If I could, the last council meeting, the question was asked about yard waste pickup, and they, and it is correct that you offered in McPherson, it's on a subscription basis only. About ten percent of the households participate, and it's something that they could offer in Linsborough if there was the desire. They would need at least a minimum of ten percent of the households participate too. By looking, a hundred and forty-two hundred households would have to subscribe to make it worth their while. What they do is they bill quarterly, and it probably be, and this is not a hard and fast number, it would be approximately forty-five dollars a quarter. That would, the solid waste utility that bill directly to those people that subscribe. They suspend service from December thirty-one through March first, so they also don't bill for pickup during that time. So essentially, it's nine months pickup, you get paid for nine months, or you get billed for nine months of service. The container provided is ninety gallons, contains the trash and recyclables, the same as beside Polycar. They wouldn't take it to the boneyard, and I'm not sure we wanted to take it to the boneyard because of the weight of those vehicles. That road just wouldn't be sufficient from, from the road surface standpoint plus road width. They would take it to the transfer station where they have a yard waste facility, that's transfer station in McPherson. So anything else? They would probably, they'd pick it up once a week, really don't know the date right now, potentially on a Friday.
So, so it is picked up once a week during, between April and November, for, for, about for ten dollars a month, I guess, during the nine months? It's forty-five dollars a quarter, or you build all year?
You're billed quarterly, so.
You're billed four times then?
No, three times.
Three times, okay.
On a quarter basis. So it'd be a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year.
The question I would ask.
This seems really reasonable.
Do they, they came a problem with people putting branches and leaves in the garbage or whatever they call it, regular acceptable? Is that a problem for them currently, which needs to be fixed?
My experience when I were living on through the yard waste was that you could put anything that came from your yard in there, whether it was grass, a branch, a twig, as long as you could get it in there. But if you threw in a rope and lawn chair, it's no longer yard waste and you're charged tonnage. Otherwise, it's a total fee.
But you're asking the reverse of that, right?
Yeah, currently, are they getting a lot of sticks in the garbage?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't really answer that question.
It would make sense that they are, I just don't know if they are or not, but.
I mean, I know what's happening, but to off-level, I don't know. It's awful hard for a homeowner that has three sticks that are falling down. What do you do with them? That's a legit question.
I don't know, but as someone that doesn't have a pickup to haul away yard waste, much less a trailer, is it, is it worth seeing if we could get a hundred and forty households to sign up? I mean, that's, that's a pretty reasonable price, a hundred and thirty-five dollars to have yard waste removed once a week during those months.
I'll sign up. That's two of that service.
Well, you'd add a hundred and thirty-eight.
I don't get to make money, I don't.
So, I mean, that's, we would have to do here. I mean, we don't have.
I know what I, you know, I just ask for the information.
I would highly suggest pursue it. I really would. I think it'd be a great service for our community members.
As city official, you should encourage our citizens to put sticks into the tractor or the garbage.
Right.
That would be the, if you're going to do something, we're going to encourage you that.
Greg, do you know what color the carp will be?
I'm looking for a boy.
It's probably, it's probably green. And this would be a great time to work on, so we could have it ready to go from April one. So staff will look into this.
That'd be a little more commercial. For, I can't raise my hand. It's three.
Four.
No, I can't use the margin, two.
And David?
No. Just give three.
You don't find it, Mark? You said it was a good deal.
I said it was a good deal, I didn't say I would. He was trying to sell. They don't have the option.
Are there any other others?
The only thing to remind council is what a national stuffer on Thursday night.
Squish crown.
Squish crown. Aye. Check in. I could be generous and say.
In early fashion, it's a burger.
Yes. Thank you, Joey, Roxy, and Rick, Blaine, Lucas, and myself.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So I'm going to say.
Second. The neighbors, aye. Thank you, everybody.
I was going to say, it's not, it's not.